Good evening. Welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting Agenda, Monday, December 9th, 2024. The time is 5:31. I'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the November 13, 2024 regular meeting.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Does anyone have any comments, corrections, additions, subtractions? No? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the November 13, 2024 meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next is delegations where members of the public could address anything that's on our agenda this evening. With this rainy night, we don't have anyone here in attendance, so I think we can move on to Agenda Item 5, Reports, starting with Mr. Cunningham, the first elect.
Okay. Okay, what's up? That's how it works. So, I'm sure everyone is aware of the various claims going on. You know, Eastline is, municipalities are always targets for litigation. And we have several situations brewing right now. One, of course, is with the police department. There's some others that, if you're following social media, individuals out there making claims against the town, I don't want to get into any specifics. But, you know, I'm doing my best to navigate, it's really a minefield as we move through the current situation that we face. So, I'm trying to be very careful. I'm trying to move us forward. I don't want to say too much more than that, but I'm very cognizant of the exposure that we have as a municipality and doing my best to guide us through that. One of the things that Kevin will address shortly is the fire service budget. You know, we've had the forest fires that they've been dealing with. We're in the midst of a transition to this 24-48 schedule that I think is really desirable by most of the firefighters. I actually had one approach me the other day. It was in front of my other office up the street and some lights up and things. And someone approached me and said, "How am I one of the firefighters? How much it has made a difference for their family?" And, you know, just having that schedule is really desirable. So, it's a tough transition. We knew there'd be some pain in making the transition, but we're getting there. We're working very carefully and diligently right now with the Eastline Ambulance Fund. And having that agreement in place is key to staying within our budget. Right now, the overtime is excessive because we're still picking up more shifts than we would otherwise for the ambulance service. We're filling in. We're hopefully, we'll be able to get away from that once we have a working agreement with them. And, you know, some back and forth between their attorneys, our attorneys, we're getting there. I was hopeful that by 12:01, it would be signed, sealed, delivered, and we'd be onto a new era. But that's going to get delayed a little bit, but we're working very, very hard to make that happen as soon as we can. Other things, you know, there was, last weekend, the fire trucks with Santa were driving around town, and I was surprised at how much people really appreciated that. Everybody really liked it. My wife is out there with the grandkids, and it was, it was a big deal, bigger deal than I thought. And it was really important from another perspective, you know, the NAIC volunteers, the Flanders volunteers, and the Eastline Fire Service. They all worked together to make this happen, and it brought a lot of goodwill and joy. And from my perspective, it was a demonstration that, you know, these three groups can make it work. And, you know, they came together, made it work for the enjoyment of people in town. So, I hope we can keep fostering good relations between those three entities. So, I thought that was very important and a very good sign. And then the other thing, we, last week, we hosted, and I attended, it was an event honoring the veterans from the Vietnam era and the Korean War area. And Susan Bysiewicz was quite involved in, you know, in having this event hosted by Eastline. But, you know, those veterans were so appreciative that they were recognized for what they did and their sacrifice, and it was very rewarding, and I was pleased to be a part of it. And it's just another thing that we can do to promote goodwill in our town and amongst all the people that live here. So, I was very pleased to be a part of it. So, those are my comments for this. Oh, one other thing. You know, I think we talked a couple of weeks ago about police radios and cell phone towers and our IT manager, Dan Cleary, he met with Marcus Communication, and that's who owns the tower out near Darrow's Pond. There's a, there's a tower. And he's also meeting with, you know, competitors as well to see, you know, what is the best way to go with that tower. And right now, it's powered by solar. There is three-phase power that's close, but not close enough to get over to the tower without a lot of expense. But I think we really need to continue to explore what our options are out there. And does it make sense to run the three-phase power out to that tower? And gives us more opportunity to rent space to other carriers? Do we build another tower? I don't know. But there are certainly options, and it could be a revenue stream at some point. So, he's really diligent looking at that. And then also working on our police radios. We have a lot of police radios that we bought. They're not, they weren't functional, but he's come up with a way he thinks to patch, get a software patch, so we can really start using them and making them useful. So, he's been working very hard on that and really happy with what he does for us. So, that's my report. Unless there's any questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for, for second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next, for reports, is the Board of Education Quarterly Report. Connecticut state statutes ask that the Board of Ed present a quarterly expenditure projections, and so they have provided that for us for their first quarter. And the Board of Ed has a meeting tonight themselves, so it would have been difficult. They would have been happy to stop in, but, so, the superintendent Jeff shared with me that they can see they are holding steady with their current budget. There have been some special education cost increases, but they have been able to mitigate them elsewhere. So, if anyone has any questions after reviewing the report, please feel free to funnel them to me, and we'll get an answer. And we also have a Board of Ed Budget Workshop coming up. Now I'm trying to remember from my calendar, whether it's the 18. But I'll double check. So, people are welcome to attend, and I'll send a reminder out to everybody in case they want to go. They've had one Board of Ed Budget Workshop so far, preliminary, and then this will be the last one. Any questions, comments? Not. We'll move on to reports from the Finance Director, Mr. Gervais.
So, some good news from the Finance Office. Well, hold on, actually. Let's say news from the Finance Office. So, last week, the town signed off on using ADP going forward the next calendar year for payroll and time and attendance. Our current software package that we have from Nova Time, which was bought out by UKG and then bought out by Kronos, is sunsetting in the next year and a half or so. This is a product we just rolled out February 2022, but if you'll remember, it was purchased, I believe, in the initial ARPA money in 2020. So, it took about four, took about three years to implement, and now they're sunsetting that after they were purchased by a larger conglomerate, wanting us to switch to another software package they currently offer. So, what we have is a time and a tent. So, when I first started, we had carbon copy timesheets, those white copies, pink copies and yellow copies. I had no idea what to do with the three of those, by the way. So, we had that for about a year and a half. We switched over to Nova Time, so people were clocking in, clocking out. In Nova Time, we would approve a file to be exported to our accounting system. Our payroll clerk would run the payroll, submit it weekly, and then have to do the 941s quarterly, as well as W2s, 1099s, the end of the year. So, what this will do is ADP will, will process the time and attendance piece. You submit it, it gets sent over to their, I'm assuming, accounting department, wherever. They process the payroll piece of it. They will then also handle the W2 piece of it, the 941s. All the, 1095s is also incorporated in this on the HR side of things. So, it just streamlines some efficiencies in the Finance Office. With those efficiencies, we're looking to kind of, I know there's always, it's two-pronged, right? You're, you're spending more for software. Where are we getting the other side here? So, we're currently exploring efficiencies in the Finance Office, increasing some responsibilities for individuals such as the payroll clerk. She's, she's very competent. She does a great job, so hopefully we can get her on maybe some reconciliations, things like that, maybe out of the payroll realm and more in the accounting side of the Finance Office. So, those will, that'll be discussions between the union and myself and Dan. So, we're hopeful to go live July 1, 2025 for that. So, 2025, the second half of the year, we'll be switching over to ADP, hopefully. Some other things we're hoping this will do, the fact that you have to be in ADP, right? So, what's currently happening is Nova Time, not everyone is using Nova Time. Town Hall and the community center use Nova Time. The police use their own system. The fire department uses their own system. They have to send over manual timesheets. That has to get manually input into the system, and then we're hoping and praying no one made a transcription error in all these different manual processes throughout the system. So, if everyone could, you know, the end user, the department heads in public safety, if they want to keep their, you know, their public safety specific time and attendance piece, they will every Monday, enter their employees into the system, verify it's correct, or use some of the modules the system has. So, we're just trying to streamline and reduce errors throughout the payroll process.
So, is there a way for police and fire to use?
There is advanced scheduling modules. The problem is, on the town side, you know, like Town Hall side, I should say, where, you know, eight to five, we do have a little, you know, scheduled change on Fridays where it's eight to 11:30, but we don't have that 24/7 schedule, like the police and fire that kind of, you know, mess up these time and attendance systems. So, they require advanced scheduling modules. So, the police currently uses, I don't even know the name of it, Altec or Aladdin or something like that, that does this 24/7 scheduling and time and attendance for them. From what I've heard, that has functionality to import into ADP. All right, it has a bridge, so to speak. For those that don't know, MCSJ are our current software. There's two towns in Connecticut that use it, us and Stafford Springs. The majority of everyone else either has. If you're a small, small town, you probably have some sort of QuickBooks. I know a lot of towns use QuickBooks. And if you're a larger town like we're doing, you implement Munis. A lot of towns, even Waterford, has Munis, but they have the ADP piece for payroll, just because there's specialty in it, and it's really a pretty good product. So, July 2025, we're hoping to roll out with ADP and streamline some of those processes. To jump around for a second with regards to payroll, if you, if you guys watch the police, uh, police, the Board of Selectmen, you'll know there's a pension and health insurance issue that affects 13 police officers and firemen on the pension side, and then 48 individuals on this health insurance piece. So, the two pieces, so on the pension, we were, the town has been deducting the police employee contributions towards the pension on a post-tax basis. While in 1986, there was a change, so we really should have switched with best practices to pre-tax. We are now making that amends and restating our pension plan. So, effective January 1, 2025, with the approval of the Pension Board, we will switch over from post-tax to pre-tax contributions for the employees that have to contribute to the pension plan. What's happened is we've had a number of firefighters and police officers, about 13, that have retired, and when we were doing our calculation for their retirement benefits, there was no taxable versus non-taxable breakdown. It was all taxable, right? So, a number of these individuals have been paying, or they haven't been receiving the non-taxable benefit piece, right? So, we went back to our actuary, the Pension Board in October voted to spend, I believe, $5,000 on this study. So, the 13 individuals will be corrected. We're going to correct three years of their 1099s, 2021, 22, 2023. And then going forward, we've instructed US Bank, our pension administrators, to change the taxable versus non-taxable breakout. So, in 2024, they're not going to have a restated 1099. It's all fixed. So, it's just three years back. So, like I said, that affects 13 police officers and firefighters combined. There's a third group that I won't really get into, but I'll just touch upon it in case anyone brings it up to you. There's a number of police officers and firefighters, I thought it was three, it looks like it might be more than that, that are not in our pension plan, but they are in a annuity that the town participated in back in the day that's not under, you know, custodial view, so to speak, of the town. It's almost like we sold, the annuities got sold off to these different companies. Some have Hartford Health, or the Hartford, some have Mass Mutual, some have Empower. It all depends on who we were using at the time. So, that's a much bigger piece we're trying to put together still. So, piece one is the 13 individuals in our pension. Piece two is the individuals we were trying to identify that are in this annuity plan. And then the third piece of it is a number of individuals, approximately 48, that have been paying post-tax on their health insurance deductions, right? So, that's supposed to be a pre-tax benefit, so to speak. So, we're working with a tax accountant to restate 2023, 2022, and 2021 W2s for these active individuals to correct this tax issue, right? Does anyone have any questions?
I would just make a comment that this is all very technical and very confusing. The Pension Board has, you know, been grappling with this for a while, and Kevin, I think you've been doing a great job trying to sort it all out. And to me, it just, it, it highlights the complexities of the things that go on at Town Hall that most people just aren't aware of, and it really calls for a level of professionalism and expertise to have, you know, discovered these issues, and we're taking the steps to correct them, and that's all we can do at this point. But thank you for all the time you've put into this.
Thank you.
Not annuity. At the time, were they given a choice? Did they have a choice whether annuity versus pension plan?
Some of these annuities are from 2005. A lot of record retention policy. I know the personnel file goes back, so we have some documentation, but a lot of the payroll records are purged after seven years. Six years is the state library record retention policy. It looks like we've been keeping them for at least 10, but I mean, my records on our accounting system only go back to 2012-ish. So, I, some of these people, I can't even pull the records to see if it was post-tax or pre-tax back then, if the code's been changed over the last couple of decades. So, this is really quite a bit of homework we're digging into. So, we're, we're going through our vault, pulling old information. We're reaching out to the actuary to see what they have for historical information, but it's really, you know, this is, this is quite a, quite a puzzle to put together the annuity piece of it.
And further complicated by the fact that the Hartford sold off the business to Mass Mutual, and then Mass Mutual.
Came Empower.
Yes.
So, there's individuals with all, I mean, there's people that still have Hartford annuities, they have Mass Mutual annuities and Empower annuities, and they all say something different on the little direct deposit they get into their bank to further complicate things. They call and I, okay, are you in, you have a US Bank payment? No, no, it says Empower or Mass Mutual. Okay, well, let's try to find a number, and no one at any of these places. You call and you give the account number? Nope, I don't have you. I'm looking at a, the Hartford document, this is the account number. But once they've been sold off and they spin off, and it's, it's really a nightmare to wrap our heads around this, especially when these, these annuity recipients call me and say, "I need to change an address." Okay. Or they change their bank. I don't even know who's sending you a check anymore. So, it's literally putting the pieces together, so we have like one historical document with all this listed. So, myself and Stacy Conocoats, our HR manager, and Christina Eppold, the payroll, are really putting a lot of time into making sure this is fixed, so it doesn't, doesn't happen again.
Do you have a third-party administrator that was taking care of these pensions, or was all done in-house?
It was all done in-house until last year, when the Pension Board authorized us to spend $12,000 a year on pension administration. I wish that was a couple of years sooner, would have saved some gray hairs up top here, but, so going forward, we should be fine.
We're flying solo with all that, with all that.
Yeah.
Amazing.
So, a lot of, you know, oh, no comment.
Well, best of luck getting us back into compliance.
Yep. So, we have approximately 62 individuals that we're going to send restated tax documents to for the next three years, for the last three years. So, there's some other pieces of this that are coming down the pike that we have to talk with our labor attorney on and, and see what, and see what we're responsible for and things like that. So, this will not be the end of this conversation in front of this board, I think. So, just to keep everyone apprised of what's happening in the Finance Office.
And we have a meeting with the actuaries next week?
The 18th, I believe.
Eighteenth.
The 18th. Yep. That'll be posted later this week for everyone to look online. See, the 18th, I think it's the 18th, Thursday.
And they are open.
Open meetings. They're in the smaller conference room, but 3 o'clock, we'll all be there. By we, Denise, Dan and I. Okay, so a few other topics to discuss. Capital Improvement Committee has met for a second time. We met December 5th. We passed out the current projected capital improvement plan for this upcoming year. I should have brought copies. I'll email everyone copies, so you can see what that looks like. It's appro, you, you all sit down?
I don't want to interrupt.
Okay. Okay. We have approximately $27 million of capital projects this year. Of that amount, 17 million is one project, the renovation and expansion of the Eastline Community Center. So, besides that one project, it's about 10.8 million, which is exactly what we bonded last year. So, it's a smaller wish list besides that one project than years prior, so just want to put that on everyone's radars.
Kevin, to the CIP community, CIP Committee, one of the great things, I think, that came out of that meeting was that we'll have a new process to actually walk through when any of the department managers has a request for a project, and it's very detailed, and I think that will put a lot of process around how the Board of Finance evaluates the different projects. So, I think it'll be very helpful going forward.
Some of those came in today. They've started flowing in. So, last week, with the recommendation of the CIP Committee, we put together our quest list, a little template. I think it's got 15 questions, and some of the questions, you know, how does this enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of town government? So, it really puts them on notice, some of these questions. Is this a health and safety issue? Is this mandated by law? So, a lot of good questions, but really what it does, I think, is benchmark all these projects against one another, right? And it really shows, you know, what departments are taking the time. Is this a shovel-ready project? Does this project take 18 months to permit for? And just kind of, you know, as, as the town has to tighten up its resources around capital projects, I think it really does a good job of, you know, identifying the projects that are shovel-ready, ready to go now, and best use of our, of our capital. Anything else you wanted to add there, Denise? I think it's pretty good.
I just think it was a great step forward.
Yep. So, a couple of other things I just wanted to take note of. I did not get to ARPA this year. ARPA, no, this, this week. ARPA has to be fully obligated by 12/31, okay? So, they have the rest of the month to obligate the funds. There's a couple hundred thousand left unobligated, so to speak. I mean, everything's earmarked to a project. The individual projects haven't been fully expended yet, so I'm working with the different department heads to go through each of those and make sure we've contracted out for each of those. So, we'll get an update for you at the next meeting, maybe even sooner, maybe the end of the week for that one. And then two accounts I want to discuss with everybody tonight, well, two departments, I guess. There should be a handout everyone has that says Town of Eastline Pension Evaluation Report Comparison. It's a four-page document. So, what we have here is page one was our, the 2023 employee contribution the town had to make, employer contribution, sorry. So, our actuaries determined, it just has a little, John, I don't know if you have one of these in front of you?
Yeah.
Yep. So, last year, the town had to make approximately a $450,000 contribution to our pension. This past year, we were surprised with a nearly $800,000 contribution, and I fear next year, it's probably about 1.2 million as well. So, we'll find out more in the next, next week's meeting, but, so, this is going to, I, I did, you know, just so everyone knows, that's why there's some paper here. I did budget slightly for more. I budgeted for approximately $600,000. Just being the conservative guy, I wanted to make sure this account was not going to go over budget, and I did not put enough aside. So, I'm projecting approximately $116,000. We're going to be over budget on this account. And, you know, depending on where we find ourselves in some of these other accounts as we get throughout the year, I prefer not to, you know, hit contingency until we absolutely have to and start, you know, clawing back money on some of these smaller accounts. Just so everyone knows, for contingency, we have $180,000 for personnel contingency, and we have $250,000 for town-wide contingency. Come together, it's about $430,000, okay? Reason I bring that up, issue number, does anyone have any questions with this before I bring up the second issue?
Does any of that police include the special duties? So, that's coming from?
That is what the large driver of this is, according to our actuary, is the increased, I don't say cost, the increased benefit that's coming from this on the, on those 30, approximately 30 police officers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so there's, because we said we're going to be 116 short.
Yep. Because it does get, so the, if we look on that front sheet, so the town, the town government, you know, town operations, we pick up firemen, police, unaffiliated municipal government, and dispatch. Board of Ed pays their portion, water and sewer each respectively splits that in half, and they pay their portion, and then the library pays for their portion. So, even though it looks like, okay, fireman is up 254%, the way the actuary explained it to me, it's, the increase is amortized across all the firemen. It's not as if, because there's only one fireman in this, one active fireman left, right? It's not as if that fireman's overtime shot to the roof. It's in total, the cost went up, and as such, it's, you know, allocated amongst these various departments. I don't understand it really myself. That's the actuary, and accountants and actuaries are like salt and vinegar. And accounts and actuaries are like salt and vinegar. But anyway.
But with also the increase in the fees that we've added and to the calculation that we charge the, for the project that's requiring all the overtime, that should help to offset.
Correct, so, so in the past, the police officers worked private duty. There's a piece of that private duty billing that gets set aside and put into the general fund, right? To offset this cost. And that was in there last year. It was well over budget, like I think we budgeted $100,000. It came in over 2, I believe. But in the past, from what I could tell, we haven't remitted that into the, into the plan, right? We kept it kind of in the general fund. So in discussions with Denise, this past year, we budgeted $100,000 into the general fund for revenues. Anything more than that, we should transfer into the pension to offset next year's actuarially determined contribution, right? Is that on the same page?
Yeah, and, and it's really, it's not that we weren't putting it towards the pension. It was just being left to the actuarial determined contribution at the end of the year. But by figuring it out on a monthly basis, once we go over that 100 and automatically add to the pension, we'll then have the benefit of investing the funds in items that the general fund is not allowed to invest in by law. So that should help as well.
So is there any questions with, with that? All right, if not, we'll, you know, everyone's invited to the pension board meeting next Thursday at 3:00. All right. Thursday at 3:00. What's the actual date? I think the 18th.
So the 18th is our active fire, active shooter throw, 3:00.
Isn't the 18th Wednesday?
The 18th.
If Christmas is on the 25th.
It's Thursday, December 19th.
December 19th, okay, it was a day off. Sorry, everybody.
So it's really on Thursday the 19th.
Okay.
Yes.
Not on the 18th.
Okay. Well, it would have been a very eventful pension board meeting. That's all we would have needed.
Lots of meetings.
So, my calendar's full of meetings. All right, so the 19th at 3:00, thank you for that clarification, Dan. All right, next item to talk about is the Eastline Fire Service, as mentioned by Dan. So the town, so the firefighter union, we negotiated this year and we've changed the way firefighters are staffed. So before firefighters had five nine-hour days. So they worked essentially, most of them worked Monday through Friday, you know, at various times, nine hours a day, right? It was eight hours straight time, one hour of overtime built into their schedule. That, in the last contract negotiation, we've switched to a 24-hours-on, 24-hours-off schedule. So they're on for approximately 48 hours a week, all at straight time. But with, you know, if, if there's a schedule to be filled, they can get called in or come in voluntarily for overtime. But really, so the prior schedule during the day, we had approximately six or seven firemen on and at night, we went down to two or three. The new schedule calls for four firemen around the clock, right? So at night, there's four firemen on, during the day, there's four firemen on. And the budget actually calls for during the day, when I say day, I think like, you know, 8:00 in the morning to maybe 10:00 at night, Dan. There was in the budget for part-time firemen during the day because the calls usually are a little higher during the day. So there was money set aside, approximately $280,000 for part-timers also to supplement the four career firemen that are on 24, 48 schedules. A big crux of, or a big piece of all this coming together is our agreement we have with the Eastline Ambulance, Eastline Ambulance Fund. The current contract we have with them calls for the town staffing, the first two ambulances from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And then the rest of the time, you know, the first two, it's my understanding it's supposed to be the Eastline Ambulance Fund. And that hasn't really been happening, so the firemen go on, I think statistically, the majority of the calls. And so while the Eastline Ambulance pays for two junior firemen from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, approximately $45,000 a quarter, to staff one or two ambulances around the clock is costing the town approximately $12,000 to $15,000 a week. Annualized over the course of a year is $700,000. We budgeted approximately $300,000 for our overtime. We are going to be about $400,000 over if the current, here's the cat, here's the asterisk, if the current schedule maintains throughout the year. In negotiations with the Eastline Ambulance Association, we're looking at a January to February transition date where they take over that first two ambulances, either around the clock or at least during the hours, not 10 to 7, right? So the good news, if there is a little glimmer of hope here, is part-time wages. We spend approximately $2,500 to $3,500 a week, which annualizes to be, I had it written down here, we're going to be over, we're going to be under budget by $115,000 roughly, part-time under $110,000. So it'll be $110,000 over. So if we have to kind of keep limping this along, we can take the $110,000 from the part-timers and offset a part of the overtime, right? If we can end, or if we come to an agreement sooner and the ambulance can kind of staff that first two ambulances sooner, that'll directly offset any overtime we have. Because it's not just four firemen we have to keep on to staff an ambulance or two. You know, if we have to staff two, one ambulance and that's two firemen dedicated to that, that means there's only two firemen in town. You need at least four, just for a basic response. So during the days, I believe we're keeping at least five, if not six, on. So we're keeping more than the originally designed plan. Just, you know, our budget, we spent a lot of time budgeting this year. So just to give you, you know, a sense of how this is working out, the regular wages are going to be within $4,000. So we planned accordingly for the regular wages. It's really this overtime, the use of overtime that's kind of killing us. So regular wages is fine, part-timers is running under and that's just really due to the number of part-timers we have. The job posting's out there right now for part-timers, if anyone's looking for a job. So it's really just a matter of getting this overtime in check. So we're, I don't want to say too much because we're still negotiating with the Eastline Ambulance Fund on a new service agreement with them. So does anyone have any questions? So it's about $300,000. If we, if this model follows through the rest of the year, right? This next year, this next week, we will be fully expended on the overtime line and the rest of it's going to have to, we're going to have to transfer from personnel contingency at the next meeting, probably.
I guess we're glad we've got a lot of rain.
Rain is good. One week of overtime on one of those fires was approximately $35,000. Some of the firemen worked, you know, literally 100 hours of overtime. So like I said, one of those, and there was three weeks, I think, they were fighting fires. So that's, that in itself was almost $100,000. So I don't know what reimbursement looks like from the state on that, especially in Rocky Neck. But the, the two fire, the fire chief and the deputy fire chief are going to exhaust all, all options on getting some reimbursements there. Couple other housekeeping items with regards to the budget, just I know some accounts that are pain points. The police overtime and wage line looks to be in line. They're about 41% expended through today. You know, and that, that really, you know, I was, when I was running the analysis, I kind of got worried there because we're, we have some of these other accounts that are pain points. That is not a pain point. One account that is running slightly ahead of where it should be is dispatch overtime, but we know why that's happening. We were short a dispatcher and then another dispatcher took a promotion to the IT department. So they're running some overtime to backfill some of those shifts and probably train up some, some new employees down there. The other line that's over budget is the police chief salary. It's expensive having two police chiefs at the moment. So when that kind of runs its course, we will, we'll have to address that account as well. So besides that, there's no accounts that really stuck out to me as crazy over budget besides the ones identified. Our plan is to have a quarterly balance sheet report, a quarterly budget versus actual with a projection through year-end so we can see what accounts are pain points. An ARPA budget versus actual within the next week or so, as well as a grant fund. So the, the agreement for the grant fund was, I think, every quarter, we'd bring the grants we have. We have approximately six or seven grants right now. And just, I guess we report on how they've been expended, things like that. So we may have another one after tonight, we'll see. So I think I fit my list. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Steele?
Yes, I've got a few. For the increase to the ADP software,
Yep.
how much is that an increase in cost?
So NOVA time is approximately $32,000 a year. ADP will be roughly 50, 52, I believe, plus $700 a month in adoption, implementation fees. So 59,000 the first year. So, and we're offsetting the 32,000 from NOVA time. There's a small portion from MCSJ we don't have to pay for anymore, a couple thousand dollars, as well as Munis. We're not going to need the HR and payroll modules in Munis as well. So it might be $10,000, $15,000 more. However, we will not get notices if the IRS has an issue with the W-2 or they can't figure, they can't find one of the 1095s. You know, some of these housekeeping items that take some time.
It's pretty close to a wash when everything's settled.
It's going to cost us more money for sure. But I think the productivity at the end of the day is going to be a nine-day difference. I think the employees will have access to, they don't have to call us if they want to find their old W-2. It'll be in the legacy system. I, I just think it'll, it centralizes things and makes it more digital for a lot of the employees. So there's, there's more cost to it, but we're hoping to realize some efficiencies and move over some, potentially move over some responsibilities to the payroll clerk.
Right, and then, boy, that pension story, that really sounds like a
It's a fun time.
A real gnarled ball of, of things. I, I'm trying to look for the right words to express that and still be civil about it. How, about how much time is being expended from the finance department to try to rectify this? And how much does that cost, Denise?
I don't even know. So my payroll clerk and I meet either weekly or bi-weekly with our tax attorney in the conference room here to just kind of keep the ball moving forward. Because this is, the, the problem is, once you get into one layer of this, then the second layer comes. So we initially went through all the employees and said, okay, great. We've got the employees here, we've got the list. Let's just go and correct their, their W-2s, okay? Well, it's not just correcting their W-2s, you've got to go back on the 941s, right? Which is like the quarterly report. So that's not in the, in the heart of itself. The problem is, you know, it's a rolling 12 quarters, you have to report to the federal government, okay? Well, that's, that means the last quarter in 2021. What do you do for the other three quarters of 2021? Do you leave those wrong and issue a new W-2, but only for the last quarter of 2021? Nope, you've got to go back all of 2021, okay? So now it's a rolling 15 quarters, all right? So it just, the, the questions, the technical questions just never stop coming. You get one step forward and then you have to have a roadblock. All right, we'll talk to you in two weeks when we get that answer. So we have been making, this has been going on since March. So we're, we're hopeful to get these out by mid-January, to get all this done, cleared off our plate. It's already corrected going forward. So no employees, all 2024 numbers are correct. So we made the adjustment before we issued the first quarter 941 in April of this year. So we corrected it in the system, so all employees are fine for 2024. It's just going backwards. So it's 23, 22 and 21 we have to, have to fix. So it's going backwards and then, you know, there's other questions on, you know, since these are tax forms, you know, now these employees have to restate, you know, 63 employees have to restate three years of tax returns. So that's, you know, 189 tax returns that are going to have to be reissued or redone. So there's some questions we have to work through with our tax attorney, our labor attorney, on best course of action going forward with these employees.
Okay, two last questions. One, when you were mentioning the accounts, you know, to kind of either have an amber or a red mark around them for watching out for. My memory serves that we used to get with our monthly meeting kind of account summaries where we were up, down, wherever, you know, the status. And I was wondering if we could maybe bring some of that back and so that we have a visualization to be able to kind of easily look at and.
So do you want a, like, a volatility report almost? Like accounts that have, like more, more than like 5% out of whack, so to speak?
Yeah, if, if other members agree that that would be helpful. If it's just me interested, then you don't need to worry. And then the other is, I'm not so familiar with all the pension business such. And for me, it gets a little confusing. I was wondering, kind of like we do for the, the budgets, that the department heads come up with narratives to explain what's going on. Would it be possible to get a narrative on some of the stuff tonight? I, I was taking notes as, as we were going along, but I, I just think it would help to get the story straight.
Okay.
If not too much trouble.
How about I talk to you afterwards and we'll talk about what you're looking for and, okay?
Richard, are you, are you looking for sort of just pension and actuarial overview or just about the specific issues?
Probably just the, the pension aspect, yeah.
Because I think we, we probably have a lot of, at least I know I have lots of different reading material that kind of helps.
Oh, okay.
And just with, with everything going on, I'm just being cognizant of Kevin's time too.
Right.
So if we could maybe.
We do have a, so the, there's something I could provide, so without providing you the, the great for reading pension document. Because there's a pension plan document. We do have, so each, each bargaining unit has, even though we have one pension plan, each bargaining unit has different benefits and structures for their particular, like, you know, the fire gets a cost of living adjustment, ups you a dozen, but the police have to contribute 8% to get 2%. Every other, every other department gets 1%. So I get you, like, we do have a, like Cliff Notes? Like, you know, a little, a little schematic of each of the bargaining units and how that, would that kind of help you out and go from there?
About the, kind of being the notes to our financial statement?
It might be. They're definitely in there.
Should be in there.
Yeah, I've seen them last time, that's been updated.
Well, I think the last issue is, what, 22?
Oh, I, I, I know, but, you know.
Maybe we have a draft of 23 that we could.
Look at here. So I'll work with you afterward then, Rich.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll send over something and we'll go back and forth.
Okay, thanks.
So with that, that's all I.
That was enough.
Yeah.
Questions?
All right, thank you. Anyone have anything else for Kevin, right? Okay. On to new business discussion, possible action. And given that this is December, part of our duties to the town is to create a schedule of all of the meetings for the next year and have them posted so that anyone who is interested can come. So everyone has the schedule. I don't think we need to read the dates.
I just want everyone to know, the first week, that is the third Wednesday. The first Wednesday is the New Year, so the Board of Selectmen took the second one. So we moved everyone, just so everyone knows, if you put a calendar invite in, you'll show up to the, the wrong meeting.
Make a motion to approve the 2025 regular meeting schedule. That submitted.
Okay.
Any questions or comments, Richard?
Yes, I won't be able to make that first meeting on the 15th, but you'll most likely, more than not likely, have a quorum. And I, I'm fine with you meeting without me.
Okay, thank you. I know we all have personal lives, so if people can't make a meeting, just as long as they can let me know ahead of time so that we can. just as long as they can let me know ahead of time, so that we can ensure that we have a quorum and/or reschedule the meeting if we don't. So appreciate that. Any other comments?
The only comment I have, we don't ever vote on it, but I put together a budget meeting calendar for everybody.
I was going to get to that next.
Oh, okay, okay, yep.
So all those in favor of the regular meeting schedule for 2025, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? No, the motion carries 5-0-0. In addition to that, so that we can all start updating our calendars.
Special meeting calendar.
Yeah. You know, there's, part of the whole budget process is that we will receive the budget from the Board of Selectmen at the March 12 meeting, which is a little bit more of a formality at that point, where we get a lot of documents. And then we have the opportunity to ask that the different department heads come in and present their budget. Typically, we have either put in our request for the different departments, we may review the budget and decide that there's either little change, or it has such a small economic impact, that we don't necessarily have to put a department head through that. So this is a, an outline of the different dates that we have scheduled, and the departments that we have set to present. So hopefully, this works for everybody, and if there's an issue with a particularly important meeting and the date, let us know. We don't have to vote on this, but I think the sooner everybody can put it on their calendar, the better, so that we're able to plan our March, April.
The one change year over year to this is the Board of Ed is presenting here in Town Hall, as opposed to the high school, when they present their Board of Ed presentation of the Board of Finance. I believe in years past, or at least in here, at the location was the high school.
Mm-hmm.
So they moved that over, over here for that day. So, yeah.
Sounds good. Anyone have any questions with that? Nope. Okay. Next on the agenda is discussion, possible action, nuclear safety grant. Do you...
You want to speak for it, Dan?
I'll, I'll give it to him.
I can speak for it.
Okay.
Do you have mine?
Yeah.
So I know Julie Wilson was going to be here, so either she's back at the EMD, or she thought this was on Wednesday. But either way, I can, I've, I've worked with her enough on this, so we can talk about it. So every year, we get the nuclear safety grant, and it's spent on a number of things in the, you know, the EMD to keep it updated and prepared in case there's nuclear fallout, or whatever, nuclear emergency. So this year, the EMD salary comes, the quarter comes in at $33,485, that's with fringe benefits. In 2024, Interceptor, so the EMD director has a vehicle to respond in. Currently, right now, we pay for mileage, and the EMD director responds in her personal vehicle when she's going to scenes. And then also, two other parts to this, Phase 1 electrical project for the emergency management trailers, so install some more lights on them, and maybe a signboard, I think it is. And then some work, some wireless work at one of the towers, to enhance the system, the radio system readiness. So $75,000 this year we were given, and so those four items. Go before you.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, okay. Move to approve a special appropriation amount of $75,000 to cover the cost of purchasing the above-listed equipment and services for the Department of Emergency Management. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Second?
The motion has been made and seconded. Discussion or questions? I know I just have one to begin with. You said 2024, but in the item description, it says 2024. Is it...
I think you blundered it. It's a 2024, not a 20...
I think I said it so fast. It's a 2020 Ford Interceptor.
Okay.
Yep, so it is a couple years old. It's not a new vehicle.
I know that, too.
But it's fully outfitted. I believe it already has a radio. I believe it already has lights, sirens, the whole shebang. So, so it's a little more money for a 2020, but it's, it's, you know, $25,000 outfitted equipment.
Thank you.
And for the salary and fringe, is that including the Chief of Independence was also the director?
Well, no. Demus, the Department of Homeland Security, or whatever the agency is around here, they read the newspaper. And so that is for the acting EMD salary, not the police chief slash EMD director's salary. So they would not cover the initial amount, so this is for the interim or acting, acting EMD director, Julie Wilson's salary.
Okay.
Plus fringe benefits.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just didn't...
So before, it was a larger amount. It was like almost $60,000.
Right.
Including his fringe benefits and all that, you know, stuff.
Okay.
But I believe they rejected the initial, that initially, and we went with this one.
Okay, so it's the fringe that kind of really helped spring this up?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, yeah, fringe is like nearly 50% of an employee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Richard?
No, I just think we should look, I sent you that email regarding the town meeting, and I mean, you said adverse impact, but that's a kind of a nifty, so I guess it's better just to have the town meeting to be on the safe side.
So we...
I was just looking to save the cost.
Oh, I, I hear you, because we, I can't remember where we did this for already, and the town attorney said to me, "Where are you getting the gas?" And I said, "Okay." Over there, she goes, "That has an impact." And so I just know, anytime you add a vehicle or anything to the fleet, insurance is going to go up a little bit, and we, the fuel and the vehicle repairs. So I know the town attorney already just checks off town meeting.
Okay.
So I, because I, I think that wasn't the intention for something like this, you know, where we're not paying for the car, okay? But, and then when you, when you talk about future impact.
Right.
I mean, everything's got a future impact.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
75 was the aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Nope, the motion carries 5-0-0. We have no old business. We have no public here. Dan, did you have anything more for...
Um...
Were you all set, or... You look like you have something.
No, just, you know, just to say, you know, I think every, every administration has a theme, and some of it is, you know, new projects and big projects and new things. And I really think the theme from my administration is trying out to be illuminating problems and getting them solved. I mean, we found a lot of, you know, this, a lot of different things, a lot of different aspects, or adding, you know, having processes that we didn't have before. And I, I think sometimes you need to take a step back and just fix as many things as you can. And it really seems that the past year, we've been working on fixing stuff, and we're going to continue doing that, and hopefully, you know, we get, we get the town in a much, in a good, a good state, you know, hopefully, a year from now. So that's what we're working towards.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I have a question, actually, from Richard, it's going to help, since we worked on your end, the last meeting.
Oh, it didn't work very well at all. A lot of the times I was trying to come in with a comment, or be able to see things that were being presented on the screens here, they, they weren't being presented in the Zoom meeting as well. And so then, you had mentioned, well, they're within the material, that meant that I needed to kind of go dig someplace else to get it. So when you share to the screens in a Zoom meeting, you also need to present, be a presenter in the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
And I don't know if you were doing that.
We should do that, probably, forward.
Yeah, that, that should be. And, and then I don't understand why I would try to talk, and I don't know if you could hear anything here or not, but I definitely was not on mute, and there were very few times that I got through, so...
I don't know whether, you know, we'll, we'll work on that, because I couldn't, I couldn't see if there was...
Yeah, yeah. No, no, if you're in here, you don't know what's going on on the outside.
Yeah.
And I just think it's, it's a blessing that in circumstances that we can attend remotely, and hopefully, we can kind of create more hybrid meetings that the, we're not getting public in person. So it'd be nice if the public could attend the meetings online, so...
So we are also, in last year's budget, we put, I think, $10,000 or $15,000 aside to digitize meeting room number two. So we're working with the IT department on getting a 360 camera that sits in the middle of that table with some microphones, so that camera, that room will be able to have be mic'd up and have a camera in there as well, just to kind of add another room for, you know, video recording. I, I think one of the issues might have been, and we, this happened before, and every time, you kind of have to go in and fix it, the sound on these computers is like automatically, on a little, that little screen is where the sound like defaults to.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know if you were just talking and no one could hear you, or if it was muted or whatever. So we'll look at that next, next time we have a Zoom. I'll work with James, our new AV tech, shout out James.
Nice to meet you, James.
And we'll, and we'll hopefully fix that for you going forward.
Okay. Well, really appreciate you guys asking. You know, I, I, it's nice to get the interest and the feedback.
Yep, thank you.
And as long as we're making comments, Kevin and Dan, thanks for the monumental amount of work that you guys are doing to kind of pull us out of the morass that we've been in. So it's, it's a complicated situation. I'm glad we've got you guys in positions we do.
Well, I'll just end with a wish for everyone to have a happy and healthy holiday season. Be careful out there, and...
Move to adjourn.
And you as well. Thank you.
Do it in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.